6:00 PM, we'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order, the city council meeting to order. We have no remote electronic attendance tonight, so we'll start with the oath of office. Chief Snyder, would you please introduce our newest firefighter?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce our newest firefighter, Noah Venky, who comes to us, he was born and raised in Moline. He's joined this evening by his mom and dad. His dad is a retired captain for the fire department, so some of you may recognize the name or the face. And his sister and his grandmother are also joining him, so thank you.
And you. I, Noah D. Venky.
I, Noah D. Venky.
Having been duly appointed to rank of probationary firefighter paramedic for the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Have been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter paramedic of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
I will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter paramedic of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter paramedic of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I believe for now. You can take both copies, sir.
No, you can take your copy, Noah.
There we go. All right. Yes, please.
Congratulations, Noah.
Chief Salt, would you come to the podium and introduce our newest police officer?
I will. Well, thank you, Mayor. I think Chief Snyder would agree that you'll find, as a council, this is one of the best times to be an elected official, to greet one of the newest employees of the city of Moline tonight. Of course, we always save the police, second because we save the best for last, right? We welcome our new police officer, Ryan Stroian. He was born in Danport, Iowa, but raised in East Moline, where he attended United Township High School. After school, Ryan attended Blackhawk College and received a welding certification, and was later employed by John Deere. In 2019, Ryan was hired by the city of Silvis as a police officer and graduated from the Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center in 2019. Ryan is currently engaged to Brianne, who's here with him this evening, has a small child, and Ryan's first day was May 3rd for orientation. He's already a certified police officer, as I mentioned, so he went straight into the FTO program and is already a little bit ahead of our typical hirer. So we're very excited to have him join our ranks at the Moline Police Department and ask if you administer the oath of office.
Please raise your right hand. I, Ryan Stroian.
I, Ryan Stroian.
Having been duly appointed as a probationary police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a probationary police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And one of my favorite traditions, I always ask the officer if they have someone special and their family to pin their badge on their uniform. You only get one opportunity to have that in your career at the city of Moline, and so I'd like to invite his fiancee, Brianne, to come forward and pin the badge on his uniform. Move that forward, and you can go forward there and take some photos.
Did you want one more, but this is two of you without a man?
You have to have one for the mantle.
We had to forego the handshakes for the COVID.
Our next item is a proclamation about National Public Works Week. Clerk, can you please read this? And Mr. Kuhlmann, are you ready?
Absolutely. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, vitally important to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Moline, whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Moline to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, Sangitha, I'm sorry, Sangitha Raiapudi, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Council. Thank you for the proclamation and looking out for what we do at Public Works. This year's theme at APWA is Stronger Together. It's a thought process that, as a community and as the public and private come together, we work together, we're a stronger community as a whole. We're very fortunate to have a lot of strong relationships in our community privately. A lot of neighborhood organizations that help us, we help them. It's a really strong environment, and it really helps us feel like our mission's being seen, it's being accomplished out in the streets with help from our partners. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, our next item is a presentation on the land bank feasibility study.
That's me. Yes, thank you. So, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Some of you have already received a presentation by KJ Whitley and our consultants on a land bank project, and so we decided not to do that again tonight. But instead, we sent you the slides and maybe, I believe, an update on those slides. And so in 2020, the city received a grant from the state of Illinois to conduct a feasibility and capacity study determined if the region could support a land bank. So what's a land bank? A land bank are governmental entities or nonprofits that are focused on the conversion of vacant, abandoned, tax-linked properties. And these types of properties, of course, to stabilize neighborhoods, create fire and safety hazards, drive down property values, and drain our tax dollars. And so in some sense, these are properties that the private market has altogether rejected. So the city of Moline and its partners are proposing to create a Quad Cities Illinois Regional Land Bank to help us in our efforts to take possession of these homes and get them back in the marketplace. Since we received the results of this feasibility study, which indeed indicated that a land bank would function well and be a successful tool for our community, the city, through its leadership, the Community Development Division, led by KJ Whitley, KJ, raise your hand there so everybody sees you, thank you, had been working with the neighboring communities to bring this concept to fruition. Again, as I mentioned, we provided your packet, a copy of the slide deck, and outcomes of the study. And we'll be back this summer with a proposal to create the entity, fund it, authorize the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with our partner communities. In order to get to that point, we want to make sure that all of our partners have agreed to the details. And so we're not here to ask you for approval this evening, but instead to just give you the heads up. A reminder that all the details, including a more precise budget, operational per forma, and the intergovernmental agreement itself will be provided to this council long and prior to any commitments you'll be asked to make later this summer. So I can answer any questions, KJ can answer any questions you might have at this time. But don't hesitate to call our office or email me, and we'll try to get some answers for you. That's what I have, Mayor.
I just have a comment. This is something that we've needed for years in this town, and even, I would say, the rest of the Quad Cities needs this. I think it's a really great step in the right direction.
Good, yeah, and KJ's worked hard on it with her staff. And also, we've got a lot of, I think, interest from all the neighboring communities, so we're just piecing where this close to getting that all put together.
So with that process, because, yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. This is one of the things where I've been really pushing for. The neighboring communities, Rock Island County, have we had any indication, hey, you know, Rock Island is on board East Moline? Obviously, we've got to work out the iron the things, but in principle, what's been...
Well, obviously, I don't want to speak for them, but yes, I think we're, we have a weekly phone call with all those communities. We've gone through the process, we've talked to them. I think East Moline, Rock Island, Myland, Silvis, and the county are all either committed or almost there, yeah. Is that correct, KJ?
Somewhat. We just don't know about Rock Island County yet, but we've been on a couple of calls. We're trying to get them there, trying to answer the question.
Well, because I ask is, through this process, if there's anything we can do with other elected officials, some might know some people on the county board around here. But I know I've talked with some over in Rock Island and different things, so whatever we can do to help grease those skids.
We'll certainly call in, yes, thank you.
We want to make sure that this is regional, because I think that that's where we'll get the most bang for our buck.
Hold on, then, more.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, this is great to be talking about it. This is National Affordable Housing Week, which is a really great timing. And I know that there's money included in that to hire the person who's going to help KJ implement all this. And so I don't know if that would be something we'd be moving on sooner than later, but I'm sure you could use some support.
Yeah, so we got $200,000 grant to use, so, yeah. And once you get this formed, it will be better equipped and more likely to receive additional grants from the state and others, so, yeah, I'm excited, thank you.
Thank you, yes, Alderman, one.
I did have one question, I think I may send this over to you. I saw kind of in the basic per forma, there was some indication of, where was it? That $200,000 in strong communities and APP. Now, is that, is the land bank eligible for that in addition to what the city of Moline gets as, is its allocations for those sorts of things? Or is that, is the idea that our allocation or a portion of our allocation would then be dedicated to the land bank? How does...
Initially, yes, and then after that, the land bank would get direct dollars from IDA.
Would that take away from our...
Probably, right?
Yes, currently, we're running $200,000 dollars from Moline, and then Rock Island has a strong community property grant. I want to say there's about $150,000. All of those two grants, 80% can be used for admin. The rest have to be used on the actual projects themselves. So we also apply for the admin pro rans property. They're getting ready to decide that at next week's board meeting at IDA. So well near before Memorial Day, we receive ABP five, but there's 120 applicants outside of Chicago that apply. So the money is very, very tight, but we're hoping that we can get another patent's money to run in and put towards the land bank. So right now, between the two of us, we have 5% from each grant that we can pay for admin costs.
Anything else? Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Next, and urgent, are there any questions on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, let's move to those agenda items. The first item on the agenda is the 2021 Annual Action Plan.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, the Community Economic and Development Department is seeking approval on the 2021 Annual Action Plan. The 2021 Annual Action Plan is from HUD, it's CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant Dollars. So every year, we do a five-year plan. You can call it our CDBG Strategic Plan. Right now, it's running from 2020 to 2024. So 2021 is our second chapter of that strategic plan, and that's what we're seeking approval for, those programs and projects that are listed in the action plan.
Move to approve the action plan? Second.
Do we know, you've given that to Alderman Waldron for the second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, Enterprise Zone Intergovernmental Agreement. Mr. Vonnix.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a ordinance amending the enterprise zone pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement with the cities of East Moline, Moline, Silvis, and Rock Island, and the village of Myland. The enterprise zone provides incentives for businesses who are growing and expanding. This amended territory would include a project from Coos Ford in East Moline, or unincorporated Rock Island County, actually, located in the former Reynolds Ford facility. The major incentive that's provided to this company, if they get, if they're located in the enterprise zone, is an exemption on sales tax for building materials, which can obviously amount to quite a bit. So we regularly, as a city, amend our enterprise zone boundaries as, and assist the other communities as they assist us as well. So the staff recommends approval.
Move to approve the amended intergovernmental agreement?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So...
Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
So they're going to get a tax break on all the construction items. We get these a lot. I mean, we'll probably get, this is the first of many that we'll get. What type of, I mean, I know that they're going to build a new building where the Reynolds Ford was, or it's going to be behind the...
I think they're adding on to the existing building.
Okay. So that's going to be a pretty good size.
Yeah. And a lot of these new dealerships are required to do major remodeling. Ford requires them to do those from time to time, so this is part of that.
Anything, yes, Mr. Alderman, one.
To that point, yeah, often they require them nowadays to match the look and style of other dealerships across the country, so it's kind of... We went through this actually with Mills before they left. But, yeah, it's pretty standard, and it costs quite a bit for these guys to do it, so...
Yeah, can I clarify the second ones, was it Alderman Waldron? Schmidt, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Next item, Enterprise Zone Expansion, Mr. Vonnix.
This refers to the same project. Just a resolution expanding the enterprise zone. You should have a map in your packet showing what that looks like.
Move to approve the zone expansion?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just, I mean...
Mr. O'Brien.
I hate to be a flying one here. So this will only be for the expansion of the Ford dealership?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Next item, 2306 dash, no, to 2308 and 2312 Fifth Avenue demolition contracts. Mr. Vonnix.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution authorizing Corporation Counsel to execute a contract with Miller Trucking and Excavating for the termination of water and sewer utilities as well as demolition of a city-owned property. Look at the addresses that you mentioned. Some of the older city council members will remember this as the Vance property. We have, in the past, had had a $51,000 plus or minus lien on the property, attempted to do an RFP to get a developer to take the property and foreclose on the owner. That wasn't successful, that occurred last year. And due to deteriorating conditions of the owner not taking care of it, as well as the rate show caused further damage, Corporation Counsel was able to acquire the property in lieu of us dropping those liens, and now it's ready for demolition. So we would recommend that we war the contract to Miller Trucking and Excavating for an amount of $49,500.
Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Alderman Schmidt.
I just want to say, I had a chance to kind of tour this facility with the Neighborhood Improvement Officer and wish we could save the building. It really would be lovely, but I think all due diligence was done, and unfortunately, the property has got to come back, I think. So I just think that's the right choice.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. One.
This is one thing along with that, because we were trying to save it and do a few things. When I was reviewing some documents here, and this may be something for a direction for staff, a while back, we had passed Principles of Development, kind of like an overlay zone for downtown until we got our Form-based code up and running. And when I was looking at it, there was a discrepancy on, there was the map that would have included this area, but the description says that it ends at 23rd. And so I'll send you that, but I just wanted to bring it up, that we probably need to bring that back just to clear that up, because this area, we want to make sure that this doesn't just turn into a parking lot or something like that. It's built up correctly to keep this old town area.
Yep.
Anything else on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number five, next item, COVID-19 Sole Proprietor Relief Assistance Forgivable Loan Program. Mr. Vonnix.
Thank you, Mayor. This I'm really excited about. This is probably going to be the first use of ARP, or American Rescue Plan money, that I could bring to you. And we want to move quickly on this, because we know that currently there's individuals who are still, from a business perspective, suffering and need assistance. And so this would create a program that would benefit sole proprietorships, small businesses who operate the business by themselves. The COVID-19 Sole Proprietor Relief Assistance Forgivable Loan Program, that's a lot of words, will benefit those individuals. And it will be, the total amount that we are allotting is $250,000, and we expect to provide 25 $10,000 forgivable loans to the applicants that apply. They can apply several ways. We encourage them to use our Forward platform, which we can show some of you if you're not familiar with it. But they can also apply the old analog way too, which is to file, fill out an application. It came to my attention that perhaps we needed to adjust the the point system for how we evaluate these loans. And so if someone moves to approve this, I would suggest that we move it with these two additional adjustments, which is to provide additional points, which will determine for any business who has had to suspend their business for six months or more prior to their application for the loan, and points for loss of revenue equal to at least 50, or to less than 50% of more or more. Let me say this again, let me start over. So points for the loss of revenue that would be equal to at least 50% or more of the average of the previous three years. So in other words, if they took in $100,000 a year for the previous three years, and then in the COVID year or the past previous 12 months, they brought in less than $50,000 a year, that would be proof that they need additional assistance. It's just easy math, it may not be that high, but I just want to let you in on that, so...
We have to, we have to move in second before we discuss.
Don't recommend approval, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Alderman Schmidt.
Well, I had a question about the, what we just included in that. So we're including vague language regarding the points, and then that would be adjusted or integrated, or how is that?
We have, we have language in there now.
I understand, but the newer...
We would add these as well. I didn't, when I sent it out, I didn't have this language in there. And Alderman went, suggested that we add that language in. And I agree.
My question is, does that mean that, are we approving that staff would figure out a way to put that in?
Yes.
But we're not designating a point value.
No, we have a hun, we use 100 points, and so we'll just adjust the other criteria so that when we come out with it, we'll have 100 points weighted properly. And I think these two suggestions are important to show that this individual proprietorship has not done well over the past previous 12 months.
Alderman Waldron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm a little bit, first of all, I've got no problem at all with the program itself. Sounds like an excellent type of program. My issue is with the timing and with the need to go ahead immediately. A, we haven't even received our ARP money yet, it's not even in there. So to fund this, to get it going now, we're going to have to take money out of our general fund to get this going. So that's a concern for me, especially since the money is supposed to be here shortly. But aren't we next week having a strategic planning session to talk about the $20,200,000? And one of my concerns is that we don't piecemeal this, that we have a plan and a strategic plan of what we do, and as a whole, how we want to spend this money. This looks like a wonderful program, I don't have any issues with it, but we haven't got a way in yet on how we want to spend that $20,200,000. So I think this is a little premature. And did I read correctly also that this is on for consideration tonight?
Yeah.
So it seems to me to be a little quick and a little premature until we have that meeting next week to decide if this is the route we want to go. Sounds like we will, I don't have any argument there. I just think the process is being rushed. And bearing all that in fact, I would make a motion to table for two weeks.
So I need clarification, can we keep discussing before we deal with the motion?
If we get a second on the table, no.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
So, please guide me.
So Robert's rules, as you just wrote on the...
So Robert's rules, as you just voted on the.
Just vote on the this one.
The table.
Okay. Uh so, I, all in favor of tabling this to the, to when? Anytime, just tabling it?
Two weeks.
Just tabling it, that's fine, you don't have to have a, just tabling it. All in favor of tabling this?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Uh any opposed? I'm not sure we got a full vote, can I do a roll call, please?
Sure. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
Thank you, the motion, the motion to table passes.
And just for a point of clarification, that was two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah, so.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes.
And wh- when we come back in those two weeks, if we go ahead, agree to go ahead with it, we'll have our revised criteria too, so.
Perfect.
Alright, moving to the next item, Seneca Company's fluid delivery system.
This is a um fluid, as it says, fluid delivery system, it's the system that provides oil, antifreeze, transmission fluid, hydraulic power steering from a large uh larger vessel into our uh fleet of cars that the mechanics use. The current one is in disrepair, uh it's been uh uh destined for replacement, uh but now um the repairs need to make it uh are probably more costly than the new one. So um staff recommends approval in the amount of seventy-three thousand, twenty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents from the Seneca Companies.
Motion to approve, second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes.
I'm sorry, can I get clarification, Alderman Moyer, are you the second or Alderman O'Brien, thank you.
I will say that out loud, yes?
Thank you, very great, very great.
We're halfway through the items, I'll change that, okay. The next item is Falcon hotbox purchase.
Uh again, this is a um uh two things or two hot boxes that were due for replacement. Um these are essentially, if you've seen them uh behind our trucks, they heat up the cold uh asphalt mix and uh the screws use it to fill uh potholes and that type of thing, so uh we're looking at uh two Falcon hotboxes from Logan Contractor Supply in the amount of thirty-seven, two-hundred-and-ninety-two. It's a budgeted item and uh staff recommends approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Alright, motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Waldron.
Uh Sarah, are you good, do they have any life left in them, are you gonna be able to give them, uh sell them to another city, or are you just gonna have to dispose on the internet?
I'll still attempt to dispose on the internet, there there's some life left, but we've been just dumping so much money into repairs that at this point it's so close to replacement, it just doesn't make sense to to keep putting money into them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Next item, Ford F-four-fifty purchase.
Uh staff is seeking approval for the purchase of four, two-thousand-twenty-two Ford F-four-fifty four-by-four pickups. Uh we'll um uh be purchasing those from the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, which is three thirty-eight hundred dollars less than Sexton Ford. Uh this will also add uh three trucks to our snow plan and will allow uh all four of them to be utilized in areas that are harder for the larger trucks to get into, so. Um it's a budgeted item, staff recommends approval. And Sarah has something to add.
Motion to approve. Second.
Alright, so motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Moyer, discussion?
I just wanted to point out for clarification, I'm actually recommending to go with Sexton Ford.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, and they're um thirty-eight hundred dollars higher than going with the suburban joint purchase um contract, but I'm recommending to reinvest the money in Waldron.
Yes, but I read that very closely in your report, thank you. Okay, any more discussion? Yes, Alderman Schmidt.
Point of order, what was approved then?
Nothing was.
What was the motion made?
I motioned, but the agenda said go with uh Sexton.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Alright, uh no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number nine, plow and crane utility body for number eight oh nine.
Since staff is seeking approval for the purchase of a plow, plow and crane utility body replacement from Canig Body and Equipment. This is on a Sourcewell contract, which is a a joint purchasing contract organization that we use. The amount's fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen. Um again, this truck can be used uh with a new V-plow, and we'll add another truck to the snow plan as well as uh provide the crane utility uh function. Staff, it's a budget item and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Thank you, a motion by Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Second by Alderman Timian. Uh any discussion? Yes, Alderman Went.
Uh quick question, I apologize for not having this question i- in advance. Um a few of these all mention the 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 new V-plows, which will be added to them. Do we already own those new V-plows, or are those coming to us later to to approve?
They're underneath the purchasing threshold, uh so we've already got them on board, we ordered them particularly, uh so Marty and I got those coming. Since I was coming with the printing bodies, I figured I would just add them all together, it's coming from the same location.
Oh no, so, but were those extra plows, were they budgeted for this year, or, okay, alright, thanks.
I I only added them together because I was already coming with the crane bodies.
Okay, perfect, okay, I I appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number ten, declaration of surplus property.
Uh so this is the last of Sarah's items, she's very busy, young lady. Uh this is two-thousand-and-ten Ford Fusion Hybrid uh that was involved in this in this accident. Uh the cost of repairing it is higher than the the cost of its value or the value of it. And so we all uh like city to coun- city council declared a surplus so that we can uh proceed to get rid of it.
Move to uh declare it surplus?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Waldron, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number eleven, parking prohibited, Forty-Eighth Street.
Uh this is a um request uh through the Traffic Engineering Committee uh to prohibit parking uh anytime on Forty-Eighth Street on the east side from the northeast corner of Twelfth Avenue north for a distance of sixty feet. Um most of these requests co-go through the um uh Engineering Committee, uh which is vetted uh by engineering and police and and uh before we make this recommendation to the City Council. Uh so uh com- staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Alright, motion to approve by Alderman Waldron, seconded by our Alderman Schmidt, any discussion?
I just.
Alderman O'Brien.
Just one question, uh what, I mean, I guess there was an explanation of what prompted this to begin with? Because it, the the parking has been there before.
Right.
And what, what was driving this, the?
Um.
We would have gotten a.
Joe, why don't you step up the microphone, so?
We would have gotten a resident request um or or uh just anybody driving that drives that path continuously. It's a, it's a, it was a um issue with visual, you know, visual when you're turning the corner coming up, so there was a request by the public to to look at no parking in that area.
Okay.
Yeah, Alderman Went.
And and I read that the the residents were asked along there and they were all.
Yeah, we will always ask residents about parking, uh the resident requested one space, we're still able to leave two and and get the parking far enough back to to allow that visual um on that corner.
Okay.
That's also very helpful uh during the school day at pickup time here, well.
We are.
That corner is is very congested, so, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number twelve, twenty-twenty-one alley reconstructions.
So this is a resolution authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to execute a contract with Emery Construction Group for alley reconstructions in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. Um we had budgeted one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for this. Uh however, um the bids for capital improvements projects uh for the city uh are across the board lower than it than than we budgeted, so we have plenty of dollars, flex dollars, I should say, to cover this cost. Um and so uh staff recommends approval of this uh contract to Emery Construction Group.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alright, motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer, any discussion, Alderman Waldron.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh Joe, do we have a history with Emery, are they uh, we've done a lot of projects with them?
They have worked in the in the city, I don't know if we've done a lot, we haven't done a lot since I've been in involved. But but they they've been a contractor, they do, they do a lot of municipal work um in the Quad City area.
Okay, thank you, I just wasn't familiar with them, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Move to item thirteen, resolution for improvement, Nineteenth Street, River Drive to Avenue of the Cities.
Um thank you, Mayor, the next two items are similar, basically, they're uh a resolution authorizing approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for motor fuel tax dollars. Uh so um the uh two projects uh are listed in your uh council action report. Um this is a requirement by the state of Illinois uh to have the city pass these resolutions authorizing the use of motor fuel tax dollars for these projects, so um the first one is for three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. And item thirteen is for one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars.
Move to approve, second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number fourteen, resolution for improvement along the Mississippi River between Seventeenth Street and the new I-seventy-four Mississippi River Bridge.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ooh, everybody.
Alright, motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by.
Everyone.
Alderman Waldron, thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number fifteen, school district police liaison agreement.
I'm gonna actually ask a chief golf to step in here and and describe this for us.
Thank you, Marty and uh Mayor, I am here tonight to ask you to renew the annual agreement with the Board of Education of Mullion School District number forty to assign four police officers, uh one at each of our four schools, Mullion High School, the Alternative High School, also known as Coolidge-Wilson Middle School, and John Derrick Middle School. Um we uh have a great relationship with Mullion School District, uh for many years, we've had school liaisons in in the building. Uh those liaisons uh act as our conduit between the school district and the police department, they're not really uh there on a daily basis to act as uh security, although they may inter- intervene if there's an active shooter threat or something like that. They're also there to counsel uh the school on how to handle incidents or take uh reports to do investigations. And so we find it to be a fantastic uh agreement, and I would ask you to renew that. Uh it does bring in revenue of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, it should be included in your packet, we calculate that every year, depending on who's assi- who's assigned there. We do have some new officers that are going to be going to those uh buildings uh this coming school year, so they have new dollar figures in there that uh my assistant has calculated, and so staff would move uh or recommend approval.
Any further discussion?
Motion to approve, second.
Uh Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm curious, with uh the the Alternative High School moving within the Maine High School, does that change this arrangement?
Yeah, so um my understanding, uh the the Coolidge moving into the building will still have a uh a fu- functionally a separation. And so um we will still have interaction in that uh wing, if you will, of the building. And so at this time, we're still um the the school district, I I did run this by the superintendent and the CFO, and they still would like to continue with four.
Dedicated resource.
Correct.
Uh thank you.
Yes, Alderman Went.
Is there any substantial differences between previous contracts on the the scope, the job descriptions?
No, it's exactly the same.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Uh hearing none, um all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number sixteen, Mayor Proton.
Go ahead. It's like me, okay. Um so this is a resolution that was um initiated by the previous mayor that would um designate a um Alderman to serve as Mayor Proton should the need arise. Um and so for the full four-year term, Mayor Raiapadi has um directed that we should do the same. And so um if she does need that, it's something that we can just refer to and call on an Alderman who um is on for that month.
Motion to approve, second.
Uh motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman O'Brien, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that motion passes. Uh do we have any items under other today? Okay, and then uh this part, do we have any public comment?
We did not.
Okay. So we will close out this committee of the whole and move to our council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have uh no invocation today, so you may sit, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole and council meeting minutes of April twenty-seventh, two-thousand-and-twenty-one, and appointments made during committee of the whole on May eleventh, two-thousand-and-twenty-one. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty-eleven dash twenty-twenty-one and ordinance amending Council Bill thirty-twenty-six dash twenty-twenty, which most recently amended Mullion Ordinance number eighty-eight dash three dash two, which established an enterprise zone in the county of Rock Island, Illinois pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of East Mullion, Illinois, Mullion, Illinois, Silvis, Illinois, Rock Island County, Illinois, and the village of Mylan, Illinois, by revising Section Three Exhibits A and B to include new territory within the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone.
Move to approve Council Bill uh eleven-ten dash twenty-twenty-one?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer, roll call, please. Correct, roll call versus.
Yep, sorry, sorry.
No problem.
You are correct.
Oh, no, any discussion first? Hearing none, all in favor, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
You're just really efficient, that's all.
I do have one point of order, just to clarify with the class, so we've moved to that.
Right. So, we just did the amicus vote and now I will.
Got it.
Yep.
I see where we are.
And now I will read non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill eleven-ten dash twenty-twenty, resolution amending the intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Mullion, East Mullion, Silvis, and the village of Mylan, and the county of Rock Island, Illinois, which established an enterprise.
I think you, I I think you just did that one.
Did we miss the consent agenda?
Yeah, that's why I was asking, the point of where is, I think we skipped to the to the non-consent items that you just read.
I thought mine was in the, I thought mine was just in the improper order or something.
Well, we have to do the consent agenda first.
So did I read the wrong one?
I think you read read the first non-consent, that's why, I followed your lead.
You read the minutes, but you didn't get the one on the motor vehicles and traffic.
Yes.
Thirty-ten, twenty-twenty-one. Second reading ordinances.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yep, yep.
So we'll, we.
That's okay, I mean, we did non-consent first, now we'll look at consent and.
Well, my back and forth.
I am so sorry.
No problem, so we're moving back to our consent.
Okay.
And you have two items.
And I am looking for, and that maybe is my problem, is I don't have my city council agenda in front of me.
Here we go, wait, here it is.
Thank you, thank you, okay. So we have second reading ordinances within the consent agenda and Council Bill thirty-ten dash twenty-twenty-one and ordinance amending chapter twenty-two, motor vehicles and. Council Bill thirty-ten dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, the Moline Code ordinances, by amending Appendix Thirty-three regarding traffic regulations on private property.
Well, and also minutes and appointments made?
Oh, I'm sorry. An approval of the minutes and appointments made in Committee of the Whole and Council meeting of April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and appointments made, I'm sorry, I did read this, I think, during Committee of the Whole on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Sorry about that.
Move to approve, second.
All right, motion to approve, this is under the omnibus vote by, um, Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. This would be an all in favor. Uh, any discussion on this? No, there is no discussion on the omnibus vote. Got it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Now we move back to the non-consent agenda resolutions. Please remind me, did we actually vote roll call on item number two?
On number two, yes.
Yes, we did.
Thank you for the clarification. So, now we move to number three.
Thank you.
Number three, we, po- point of, uh, uh, order, what I would suggest is that the mayor remove this from the, uh, the, pull this from the agenda as it's been tabled in the COW, so...
Oh, okay, point of order. Uh, point is well made. So, it's because this has been a number three Council Bill Resolution, eleven-eleven dash twenty-twenty-one has been tabled from the Committee of the Whole. We will ta- we will remove this from the agenda. Okay, so then we move to...
First reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty-eleven dash twenty-twenty-one. Uh, an ordinance amending Council Bill thirty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty, which most recently, did I not read this one already? This is the one we voted on, right? I'm so sorry. I had this out of order.
Thirty-ten.
You're looking, you're looking for thirty-eleven.
This is the enterprise one, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we did the resolution amendment, the intergovernmental agreement.
So, it just read the same, okay.
Yeah.
Um, thirty-twenty-six dash twenty-twenty, which most recently amended Moline Ordinance Number eighty-eight dash three dash two, establishing an enterprise zone in the county of Rock Island, Illinois pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of East Moline, Moline, Silvis, Illinois, and Rock Island County, Illinois, and the village of Mylan, Illinois, by revising Section Three Exhibits A and B to include new territory within the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone. And that is all I have this evening, your honor.
Okay, thank you so much. So, now we move to miscellaneous business. Uh, I think of this as open discussion. Um, but I will turn it over to Alderman. Uh, this is where we go around the room, right? Do you have anything?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Macias?
Nothing this evening.
All right, Alderman Went?
Just want to say it's great to do a meeting with everybody.
Thank you. It is good to be together. Alderman Timian?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Alderman Moyer?
Y- yes, your honor. Just quickly, wanted to thank the, um, lieutenant weeks of the Police Department for the outstanding training that we received this week. Um, it's really, uh, eye-opening to get to see, uh, some of the decision-making and, and training that the Police Department goes through and, um, just want to reiterate, uh, the high character and training and, uh, professionalism of our police staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alderman O'Brien?
Just look forward to serving with everybody.
Thank you.
Alderman Waldron?
Nothing, your honor.
Alderman Schmidt?
Uh, yes, your honor. I, uh, in addition to doing the MyLAW trainer, had the opportunity to go last Friday and spent a whole day with many members of our staff and met with almost every department and, um, just really appreciated people, um, and their willingness to share and to answer my questions and to ask me questions. And just felt really good about, uh, working with our staff and really look forward to working with them. And thank you to those of you who are here and those who are not here who helped make that day a, a very wonderful start to, uh, to my service here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do have a few things as well. Um, I got to say hello, um, and thank you to the department directors today at their meeting and also participated in the, uh, MyLAW training, which I found very eye-opening, and thank you so much for that. Um, I also have let you know that I'll try to give you some electronic updates weekly, but since we are now meeting, uh, I'm gonna give you a couple of updates. I am having regular meetings with, uh, Renew Moline and our city administrator, um, you know, just to get going on some of the thoughts and ideas and plans and processes and partnerships for I-74 redevelopment, getting up to speed there. I have regular check-ins also with the Chamber of Commerce representatives, and that's been very helpful to get, um, in on conversations. I have regular check-ins with our legal counsel, Margaret, and thank you so much for being here today. And I'm continuing to connect with all of our boards and committees and really establishing, you know, what people want to see moving forward, who wants to continue to serve, all those things. Just as I've asked you as well about your interest, um, and your experience and all of that. So, I do plan to get moving on more details, um, and, and who's doing what, um, in the very near future. I think by the end of May, I'll have a few things rolling out and into June. It'll take me a little while to get, get through that. Um, I continue to funnel ideas from the community to staff for follow-up, and that's very helpful to have these regular meetings set up with you as well, Mr. Vonix. Um, lots of great ideas coming in through email about the redevelopment areas, art, um, other business ideas, things like that. So, lots of communication is happening. And that brings me to what I promised would be an update uh, about the first listening post that we, um, conducted last Wednesday. And the top priorities that were mentioned, I think, um, you know, it's very fitting that we're celebrating, um, National Public Works Week next week because that was something mentioned, um, was that we should educate the public about our, our city operations, find ways to bring them in to the experience so they re- they know, you know, where their money is going and, and what they're, um, benefiting from. Um, uh, other priorities, just, um, working toward real clarity on getting permits for, in planning and zoning. Um, they're concerned about the Avenue of the Cities, uh, in retail or commerce up in that area. Um, our relationships with Western Illinois and our reputation. So, those were the, oh, road closure link, what do we... Alderman Schmidt, do you remember? They, they wanted more easily accessible information on road closures.
Yes, um, and specifically asking where, like, to how we notify the public of when there are load, road closures happening, yes.
So, that's something we'll continue to follow up on, just so, is we're getting in on how all of that happens as well. Alderman Went?
Are you guys updating, uh, movie Moline?
Yeah, so, uh, on our website, we have onward Moline and maneuver Moline. So, there's two, there's two separate, uh, uh, tools there. Maneuver Moline shows road closures, where they're at, um, anticipated opening and closing of those to try to inform as much as possible. But, but those are tools available on our website.
Okay, thank you. So, my, my, and then finally, we did have, um, someone who asked about the social workers embedded with our Police Department, um, and wanted to mention that as a foster parent, they had had very, very good experiences with that in our city. So, uh, just encourage you to vote, um, that, that is, that is going well from at least this community member's perspective. So, thank you for that. Um, I am trying to brainstorm ways that we can make sure the public knows about the conversations, uh, you know, can access them in multiple ways. We know that not everyone is online, all right? And not everybody gets the news from the newspaper even, uh, they don't have computers in their homes always. But, of course, it would be untenable to send, uh, mail to every single home, um, for quarterly meetings, potentially. But I want to look into, how can we reach everyone with a press release, with a radio, and how can we make sure we're connecting? So, as we talk through strategic planning next week, uh, which I'm very much looking forward to as our first big, um, team, team approach to our, our vision and values and how that gets lived out, um, that might be a topic that I want to talk with you all about, is how can we make sure the public, um, gets this information? Facebook updates only go so far, right? But I will definitely mention the maneuver and, and, uh, maneuver Moline and onward, um, myself. So, I encourage you all to do the same, um, you know, when those kind of questions come up on, on the pages that you manage. Um, that is it for today, from me. So, do you have anything?
Hey, I do, I have a couple of items, Mayor, thank you. Um, I do want to point out, um, uh, two things. First, I'll go with the, the quick and easy one. And the fire chief is here, if you have any questions. Um, and I put a, a fly, a, a news release on your desk about this. Uh, they're doing a, um, a training out on the old part of the, um, bridge on I-74. And, um, it's gonna be really interesting. They're gonna do, uh, transfer rescues, um, rappelling, all kinds of fun stuff. I'm, I'm, I'm ruining your, your presentation here, chief.
No, not at all. And I, uh, uh, wanted to apologize to you all, uh, for the timing. We didn't have much of a window of opportunity for you to plan this. Uh, we certainly recognize, uh, your time is valuable. Um, all the fire chiefs have been working on this process for months now, and if you can imagine uh, getting approval from the Iowa and Illinois Department of Transportation, uh, that in itself has been a Herculean, uh, task. Um, and then we had to go through the, uh, safety, uh, for the bridge, uh, companies that are working on the bridge. And, and so those entities have all finally signed off on this. And so that's why the late, uh, notice, uh, we would like to encourage you to come. I've, uh, had discussions with MetroLink, um, and they are willing to supply a bus for us so that we can limit the amount of traffic. Um, and just so you know, all of your peers in East Moline, Rock Island, Bettendorf, and then leadership, uh, from the arsenal and the airport, uh, have been, received the same invitation. And so it might be an opportunity for you all to, uh, be able to, uh, interact with your peers and see some of the capabilities that your, uh, that your area departments have for some, some specialized rescue, uh, capabilities. And I have a good, uh, word that, uh, I believe we have a, uh, volunteer, uh, Chief Galt is gonna be in the basket riding from high to low.
Check my calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Just let me know, uh, we will need to know, uh, by next Monday. I believe that document indicates that. Just so we can, uh, ensure that we have a large enough bus. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. And then the other thing I want to talk about a little bit is broadband. And so...
I'm so sorry.
Yep.
Uh, yes, Alderman Schmidt?
Due to a, a business relationship, I need to recuse myself for any of this conversation.
Thank you. So, so, uh, I want to draw your attention to the memorandum that I, uh, provided you last week regarding the recommended action. I think, uh, we as a city should take in regards to the broadband RFP. Uh, we received two very robust proposals. However, at this time, I'm reticent to recommend either one for the several reasons that I outlined in my memorandum, and I'm not gonna go into them here. You can take a look at it again if you'd like. Uh, but most importantly, I think we need to treat the implementation of broadband in the city, particular system that we may have substantial investment in, like any other piece of infrastructure. Uh, broadband is the twenty-first century infrastructure, and I think it's important that we, uh, pay attention to how we implement that. And we have this beautiful new bridge building, uh, that we're building. It's cost hundreds of millions of dollars, was carefully planned and designed. And I think we should do no less with our modern infrastructure, you know, the, the bridge to our future. So, um, there are many paths we could follow in regards to broadband in the city, and I think that, uh, I don't want to rush into that decision. So, I know people in this community want choice, and I recommend developing a strategy, and we'll talk about this in our strategic planning session, a strategy for community technology that serves everyone, but also includes the city's needs, uh, needs to be considered. So, what I'm reporting to you tonight is I'm, I'm putting a pause on the implementation and negotiation of the current RFP. Uh, in, uh, in the previous council meetings, which the new council members were, uh, at, uh, we indicated that we were gonna start negotiations with, uh, Geneseo, uh, Communications, but at this time, I'm gonna put that on hold. And what I want to do is after the strategic planning session, come back to you, uh, depending upon what we decide there, uh, with, um, either, uh, recommendation to, uh, bring on a consultant to help us create a technology plan, or depending again, what we decide, uh, some other, uh, strategy. So, um, that's kind of where we stand with, with broadband. Um, I don't need any, uh, council direction at this point because it's a basically administrative, uh, activity. And, and related to this, I just want to make one final note. Um, we've received a lot of calls regarding Metronet. And for those, uh, who don't know, in June of last year, it's been over, almost a year now, this, the city council rejected a franchise agreement proposal from Metronet. And there are various reasons that they did that, uh, including, uh, the fact that Metronet wanted to put up multiple poles for poles where existing poles already exist. Uh, they wanted not to serve some of the lower-income neighborhoods, and so the city council, uh, rejected that proposal. And although the council asked us to go back to the drawing board with Metronet, Metronet, neither party, uh, that I'm aware of made that contact. Um, I didn't, I can tell you that. Uh, so on Monday, in a separate conversation we had with Metronet regarding right-of-way licensing, they want to stretch their cable from Rock Island to Moline, East Moline. I suggested to the Metronet official that our door is still open, and that if they have a alternative proposal, if they want to come back to the table, uh, that, uh, we can listen to what they have to say. So, I don't want, I, I want to make sure that we all know that. Um, even though that direction from the council is, is six months old, um, I'm still, uh, suggesting to Metronet that we'll, we'll listen to an alternative proposal, uh, if, if they have one. So...
Okay, Alderman Waldron?
Marty, from my own knowledge, if we decided tonight to go with the, uh, Geneseo and the broadband, how long roughly would that take to get implemented? Are we talking years?
Their proposal, I believe, was a two-year construction schedule, um, and they would probably like to do a three-year construction schedule if, um, uh, if they could stretch it out due to costs. But it's, uh, their, their proposal was, depending upon how you look at it, anywhere, I would say between ten and fifteen million dollars in terms of costs, which they expect the city to, um, uh, front some of that.
In relation to that, that, that's very helpful.
Yeah.
Because it makes me more or less, maybe more interested in Metronet. How long was Metronet gonna take to implement?
I don't recall. Um, Joe, do you remember?
I don't remember.
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I, probably not as long because they, you know, Geneseo was all underground. Um, fiber to the home.
Metronet was up.
And, and the Metronet would be hanging on poles. So, they probably are, would, would go much faster, is my sense.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before I ca- call on you, uh, to that point, um, that is great information for us to have at the strategic planning if we're looking at this as a whole. So, Alderman Waldron?
I, I think that it was probably a year, I think, because they're, they're just stringing it and dropping across. Uh, I, I've got two things. One is, uh, what you had mentioned about us giving direction to staff. I mean, us who were on the, the previous council, that was, that was a really big vote. We were, we were prepared that night to approve it. They showed up with basically a map that, uh, cut out some of our lowest income, uh, areas, uh, when we asked them to, to modify that, to have some kind of, uh, assurance that they would provide it for our entire community. At that time, they couldn't. But we gave clear direction, I think, to staff to go and talk with them. And I, I mean, I think all of us that were in class were, were under the impression that that's what was happening, and that's why we were waiting, waiting. And then finally, after about six months, we were like, well, if this isn't going anywhere, that's when we went to the RFP. So, I, I, I want us to figure out a way that when we give direction to staff, that it's followed through and there's, there's follow-up. I mean, I, I don't want to micromanage. The assumption is when we give direction, that it happens.
So, that, that's a two-way street. So, our processes have to reflect the direction and the follow-up, and so we can work through that together. I think that will help, the, the regular meetings that are happening will help with some of that. Uh, because I can definitely go back to our city administrator and double-check on some of these items. And, and the processes that he's started with updates on Fridays, that's a great place because we're all invited to ask him questions there. That's a great place to look for the items that we were looking, we were hoping to see. Also, I, I... So that, that's a two-way street. So our processes have to reflect the direction and the follow-up, and so we can work through that together. I think that will help, the, the regular meetings that are happening will help with some of that, uh, because I can definitely go back to our city administrator and double-check on some of these items. And, and the processes that he's started with updates on Fridays, that's a great place, because we're all invited to ask him questions there. That's a great place to look for the items that we were looking, we were hoping to see. Also, I, I am used to a process where, uh, if you have an agenda item, um, that can come to the people who are setting the agenda, and we can talk about it. So if you remember that there is something that needs to be addressed, send me a note, uh, and when we get to that, that meeting for agenda setting, you know, I can bring that up again. But I do want to say one other thing on this item. I'm happy to look at the silver lining about this. Um, I am interested in, in, uh, in looking at broadband as an infrastructure project, because I believe all of the commerce, um, all the economic activity we want to see in new, uh, re, or redeveloped parts of our city must have that infrastructure, just as much as they must have roads and access for the people. Um, and we have to learn how the economy has changed now that people have done so much from home. But another good reason why looking at, um, easily accessible broadband options or internet options makes really good sense from a, a bigger planning perspective. So that, that's the silver lining to me. Sorry.
Well, and, and that's exactly why we didn't want to be in a situation where they cut out our most vulnerable in our community. That just was unacceptable. But the, the second thing I, I wanted to, I, I have a little problem, and, and I, I would support this, but the council gave it and gave direction to move forward with that RFP and, and everything. I, I, I have some trouble with staff unilaterally saying, well, I've decided that I'm going to stop that, that process. If, if, if your recommendation to us is to stop that, I think that that's something that the council has to vote and approve, and I'm going to support it. But I, I just don't, we, we historically have run into situations where we have given direction, or we have, uh, made a policy or whatever, and then in certain circumstances, staff has decided, we're not going to do that anymore, or we're going to put that off to the side, or, or whatever. And so I, I, while I support it, so I'm going to make the motion that we take Marty's recommendation to hold off on that and have that discussion, uh, in two weeks, uh, as part of our, um, strategic planning.
Second.
I don't think this is something that needs a motion, correct? Because the, he hasn't presented it for any action.
No, he said that he's already made the action, that he's stated.
Please clarify.
We've given him direction. You don't, if, if we've given you direction, you move forward.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, city council did not give me or staff direction to go out for RFPs on this.
Yes, we did.
No, I was handed the RFP by council and Mayor Akri and said, take care of this, so.
And we, we, no, and we discussed it, and, uh, I mean, I can talk with, I think that we all, um, uh, discussed it and, and, uh, and had you move forward with it.
Before we move to your motion, uh, and the second, I would like to, uh, inform everyone that I have asked, um, our legal counsel for a roles and responsibilities training, which should help clarify the question you are having about who gets to say what, um, who, who is in charge of these, um, decisions when. So that is coming, and I think that will help, um, put people at ease. But if you, um, but anyway, Margaret and I have talked about that, and that is coming. So there was a motion to push this discussion to, two weeks, uh, to our strategic planning session, correct?
Yeah, I mean, ba, basically to do what Marty had, uh, was saying that he was going to do, take it as a recommendation that, um, that have staff hold off on it for a couple of weeks until we give them direction coming out of these strategic.
Okay. And it was seconded by Alderman Williams. Thank you. Uh, and that is an all in favor, correct? As opposed to a roll call. Can you clarify, please?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I missed the discussion piece.
Oh.
After the motion. Is there any discussion? I'll go back further. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that must pass. Thank you. Okay. Any other items under this section, Miss Laine's business?
So our goal, Your Honor, our goal on our strategic planning session is multifaceted. It's not just ARP money.
Right.
Thank you.
That's laying the foundation for what we want our work to be together. Yes. Alderman Went.
One, one thing that you had mentioned when we meet with Renew, you'd talk about art. Do we have a timeframe for when the, um, uh, the art, uh, ordinance is going to come back to us? That kind of just disappeared.
Yes, I've, we've been talking about that.
Probably in the next couple of weeks, yeah.
The next few weeks.
Okay.
I think we're balancing out all the items at the moment and continuing, uh, we, uh, to gather a little bit more information.
Okay. It just, it was there and then it kind of disappeared.
Um, it, I think it's good to get a little feedback from developers themselves about, you know, before we have that in our thing, if we pass that, what, what's their general reaction to it, you know, before it's a requirement? That's a question I would like answered, just to know what the perception of that is.
Uh, I, I mean, I, I think that they had some developers on the master art committee, and they talked with them, but, yeah.
That's a, it's part of a conversation with, um, Renew Moline. So, anything else? All right, and there's no public comment, so.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven, and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees five ILCS one twenty slash two C one.
Second.
Uh, motion by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman, um, Went. All in favor? Our discussion? No, there's no dis, roll call, please. Thank you.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
It is no names.
Okay, we move to executive session. No. Um, so I ha, I, the motion is, uh, to extend the.
The GovTemp agreement for city administrator, which is Marty Vonix, for seven months, um, retroactive to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and extended to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. This would be.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
It is no names.
Motion passes. Uh, need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yes.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go, you can't get it.
And Schmidt.
All right, you got that?
Yep.
All in favor?
Everybody needs to get this.